I will share out the the share function, share screen function when we get to your presentation.
Perfect, perfect.
For some reason, there is a lot of feedback coming from somewhere. It must be their phone.
Yeah, it's all right.
All right, is that better?
Yeah, but I think it's gonna pick up. Anybody that talks is gonna pick up, it's gonna...
I think the mayor has to mute his computer audio.
Yeah.
Okay, we muted the computer audio. Awesome. All right. That was painful.
Modern technology.
Hold on, now they don't hear that at all.
You don't hear... Oh, because I muted the sound.
Yeah. Did you just have them on the microphone or what?
Well, hang on, Mike. Hang on, because we had to mute the sound. Victor can't pick it up for the TV.
All right, so now we have...
Can't you just record the Zoom? If you're recording this Zoom meeting, is that adequate?
He can also mute the phone and then unmute it when he needs to speak.
Okay.
What's the, Anthony, what's the workaround there? Can Victor hear in the...
Yep, we're good with Victor now, and we're gonna just talk into the phone.
Where he's at, can he pick that up?
Yes. Are you hearing us? Are you hearing us now?
Are you hearing us now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
All right. There's gonna be a message.
Okay, I guess I have to talk into the phone.
Does everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's get...
All right, let's get started.
Let's get started.
Town Council Meeting, North Carolina for Connecticut, Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, at seven...
Nine.
Seven oh nine PM. Let's start with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Okay. Michelle, you want to do a little call, please? Here.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Doody.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin. Counselor Gold. And Counselor Felicia.
Here.
Okay, next is minutes of the previous meeting, December 1st, 2020 WPTCA, Town Council Minutes.
I'll move second.
Okay, Michelle, did you get that? I didn't see you made the motion. Rose, Rose and Maria.
Yes, yes, I did.
Thanks, Anthony. Uh, can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, before I forget, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. We're not gonna meet until after, after the holidays. So Merry Christmas to all. I don't know if you guys can hear.
Merry Christmas. Same to you, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Uh, we're gonna move in, move into the regular Town Council Meeting.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before you, before you begin, if I could just say that there is a supplement, and I hope that somebody could recommend amending the agenda to take up item 8C, which would be the approval of CIP plan, which is, we came back from planning and zoning.
I'll make that motion to amend the agenda, add item 8C, CIP.
Second.
Is that 8C? Is that what that was?
8C.
Correct. Okay, you made the portion, Rose?
Yes.
Marie, second.
Yes.
Any discussion? Do we have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next is reports of committees, boards, and commissions, which we have the Economic Development Commission.
There's nothing new to report from the last meeting, when Roger had submitted to us.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Uh, next, Parks and Rec.
Their, their meeting for tomorrow night was canceled due to the impending storm, so they won't be meeting until January.
Thank you. Police Commission is next.
Police Commission met last evening on the 4th of December. The Officer of the Month, Officer Raffi, he was is on way for serving the community, particularly going above and beyond the food pantry. Police Department is experiencing a lot of overtime under COVID, and asked me to ask the Town Council, will you give me any, any recouping of any funding through state or federal monies as a result of COVID? I guess that's something that Mike maybe can think about or find out. The canine training is going very well. I guess our, our dog is doing extremely well with the training and is one of the best ones up there. The new Police Department, they've started clearing out the lot, you probably, some of you probably noticed that. And the roof project on the older building is, has been completed. And that's, that's the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, next, Fire Commission.
Yeah, so the Fire Commission met on the 3rd. Just a couple of things that are notable. Company one, I guess, has been having a problem with their generator since it was installed. Fortunately, it still falls under their warranty, so there's no charges to the town or anybody at this point in time. Hopefully, they can get that figured out. Also, Engine, Engine 3 status, it's still in the planning stages. There's no construction started on it yet. Um, it's been, it's part of that's been affected due to COVID. And they are estimating, once they do start construction on that engine, there's 390 days of construction. So it'll take 390 days at that point before we get it. And again, that's being affected by COVID as well. Uh, ambulance floor four is still being climbed. It's not in the same phase as Engine 3. No estimates of how long that'll take once the design is finalized. And the cheese vehicle that we approved back in the spring is in West Haven. It's waiting for some parts to come in on it, and then the cheese vehicle should be hopefully delivered to the town at that point in time. That's it for now.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Next, we have Board of Education and Town Council.
County Communication Subcommittee.
I know, Mayor.
Okay, next, we have Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, they met on Thursday. And they had a public hearing on the, on a tax amendment for farm, events on farm properties, 10 acres or greater, that are not related to agriculture, more like weddings and parties and things like that. They're working on trying to get a, something documented that not only allows farms to generate some revenue, but also protects, you know, the residents that may be abutting them. But that, that public hearing, they're just leaving it open through, at minimum, through February, just because of the, you know, pandemic. They want to make sure that enough people are, can get involved, because they want to get involved to make comments. Other than that, they they did review CIP, and again, turned it, you know, gave us a favorable decision. And, and that's about it.
All right, thank you, Tom. Next is the North Carolina Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
Okay, the committee met on Wednesday, December 9th. We reviewed the furniture proposals, and I have to say that the committee does have a number of questions. I don't think the committee was entirely thrilled with what was presented to them, so that's probably gonna continue. We continued with us Silver Petraselli giving us a presentation on more of the construction documents. In particular, there was a lot of discussion about the gutters and the downspouts. And the last thing is that there will be a letter that will be going out to the residents in the area. Some residents are starting to have some questions, so there is going to be a letter. I guess it'll be coming from Mike, to all the residents that are near that proposed facility. And that's it.
Yeah, I could just add that that letter's gone out, and we did to the budding property owners.
Okay.
What were their concerns?
I, I have a feeling one of the concerns is the lighting at night.
I, I think, I think you're right, Marie. I think it's the visual and, and/or screening, if there's gonna be any, any trees, you know, planted or screening and the, the I guess really trying to understand the size and scope of, of what we're gonna be doing there. So we sent out a site plan, we sent out the rendering, and we sent out the time, timeline as part of the letter. And so they can certainly also access to the, the meetings and, and the agendas, so they can follow it, and then call or email if they have any specific questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, next is Finance Subcommittee.
Finance Subcommittee met last week. Items on our agenda, some of them are on the, on our agenda tonight for further explanation. One is the request to increase the purchasing threshold to 15,000, which was on our last agenda. Mike gave us a little clarity, and that's coming up later on our agenda that's for us to go over. We also looked at the 2018 tax dilution status, as we'll see in our financial report later in the meeting. And that is one area that is down considerably from last year, and a lot of that to do with because of the pandemic starting in March of last year. That's generally when they go out to the Marshall, and they're to a collection agency. And the council voted not to do that last year, so we are just going to roll that into the 2018. We're gonna roll that into next spring with the 2019, and do them both together. And then also presented the proposal to increase the hours for the Part-Time Central Service Secretary. And this is the one that works with Michelle Maughlin, and with all the upcoming construction projects that are on. A few years ago was a full-time position, and the person in the position at the time, I wanted to get to do the part-time hours, and then she eventually retired. So we asked Mike to think together a, kind of like a itinerary or ideas of how they're going to use this person if it was full-time, so that we can look at that during our budget process next year. Uh, we also talked about the trash contract under our finance report, and I know that is also coming up on the agenda later. Mike has some more information, so we'll be going over that at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Ad hoc Design Review Committee.
No meeting.
All right, thank you. Let's, uh, we'll move into the Town, Town Manager's Report. Uh, first is update on COVID-19.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I have the report in there, statistics from the state, and also from East Shore Health District. And again, as most of you are aware, those numbers keep climbing. I think the graphic that shows the three towns and our, our monthly cases really speaks to what's going on. And I know you're all following on the news and know that we're, 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 we're watching those numbers climb. So if I could just point to the fact that the statistics that, that they've collected in the month of November, we saw our cases shoot up to 117, which is significantly higher than October's 44. And then the next graphic is just only halfway through the month, two weeks, two weeks in, we're already reporting 96, and those numbers were coming in pretty fast. So I'm sure we've already gone well past that, because there is a lag from the state data that comes into Mike. So every indication is that we're gonna be even significantly higher than November's number of 117. So that's just, you know, reflection of what's happening out there. Obviously, we're focused at this point on testing, working on the possibility of getting a stand-up test site for North Brantford at some point. And we've got to work out the logistics of that, of that. And also, the Health Department is now also looking and monitoring the vaccines that are coming and being released. And I know that Yale received their shipment, is already administering some of those. The Health Department, I'm told, is going to get a portion, some number of vaccines as well. But they're breaking it down to what they call a Category 1A and a Category 1B. And again, this is pretty fluid, coming from the state. So looking at, you know, doctors, nurses, healthcare providers, nursing homes, and vulnerable population, and then first responders and, and folks involved in administering or transporting potential cases. So working on the front lines first, as, as you may know, and then, you know, as more shipments and supplies become available by the spring, we'll have an opportunity to get to, to general public, general population. So emphasis right now is on the testing and trying to figure out the distribution and timing of vaccines. I'll answer any questions on that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mike. Next is update on presidential election.
Yes, we've invited both Lisas are, I believe both Lisas are here with us, from both the Clerk's Office and Registrar's Office. And there was a a budget document in there, and I think Lisa has an update, and I'll turn it, turn it over to them. They wanted an opportunity to make a presentation, speak directly to the council. So Lisa, it's all yours. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you for your support. And also, are, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And also, we could not have done this without the volunteer members that we have. I had on my side people that volunteered and helped us throughout this. Two and a half, maybe, just all volunteers, so I cannot think this could be enough. There was many more that volunteered, but due to social distancing, we weren't able to reach them. And luckily, instead of the 60 that we were anticipating, as the state told us, we only had 31.4% absentee power. And I can, that myself, my deputy, it worked seven days a week. I didn't have the volunteers working seven days a week, but I could not have done it. So thank you to everyone, everyone that helped us. And I just wanted to give you one correction on the spreadsheet that I gave to you. At the bottom, there was a, a refund for the rent of $130 that they put into the bottom figure, as well as I had to add in $53 for me. So the total at the bottom is really $2,484.98. So it did go down, in spite of whatever we had to add in. Um, there were, you've probably watched the news, it has problems with arrests, with this system. State tried to help through, so that made it much more difficult. But the good thing, I think the state like that seems to be updated. It's with absentee, no absentee, there's no excuse. The process needs to be, it's two owners. It's just an old process that needs to be fixed and modernized, because I don't think we can focus again. Lucky, and I and my colleagues across the state did it, our numbers, but it's extremely difficult. There were days we didn't think we would make it, but, um, so thank you to everyone who reached out to us, because it's just that some of the darkest days, somebody thanked us, sent us a little note. So it meant at that, I can, Lisa, unless you have any questions for me, I can let Lisa speak for the Regist.
No, go ahead.
I'll step out in my car.
I want to ditto what she's, what Lisa said about all the volunteers and all the, we got a lot of and was paying that, and they were happy how it turned out, when we were, it was, it was a nice feeling after that. But before that, it was a little stressful, but like I said, we also had volunteers, and we were blessed to have them. I don't think we wouldn't, would have, we would have been able to make it without them. In general, the, we, we came in, we had, we had a lot of usual, when we wanted to staff people, we had a hard time finding the staff workers, because nobody really wanted to, to come in because of the COVID. And that was a, was a big deal. But in, for the, in general, we had to add more people for greeters and cleaning. The relative, amount of people we had to generate, had to have two moderators for each, each place. And so we were one in, from Harrison, absentee plus had EDR. So we're running four elections one day, think about it. That really, it brought our costs up, because in each place we had at least 15 people. So ballot printing was excessive. We never ordered more than 80 people. This year, we ordered 100%, and I'm glad we did. And that, you know, put a dent in our little budget. The other two things were the policemen for, for stealing tea on Election Day, which
we're gonna take that away.
Which brought in, you know, brought in costs for about $3,000. We didn't budget. Um, then the other things, when we didn't, did a restriction of our budget, we didn't, you know, we didn't, didn't anticipate a lot of the plans, a lot of all the little So, you know, all in all, we probably, for the election side, for the for November, we probably spent around $17,000. And then for the primary, about $9,500. The primary, we were not anticipating, I'm gonna tell you this, we were not anticipating a dual primary. We were only anticipating a Democrat. We didn't think that we were gonna have to run a Republican at the same time. And so that brought in double the cost that shouldn't have happened, but it did. So pretty much, we, it, we think, we feel like we did an okay job on it, and, yeah, and then the, where was Yeah, we were, in the, in the end, we have, we have a grant of $3,000, and we're, out of that $3,000, we, out of our pocket, we're gonna probably have to spend $100 to get the $3,000. And that basically is from all the computer equipment that we had to have for EDR, for the town hall. We had to set that up. And then, and then, exactly, and the town clerk used them too, so we were double, piggybacked on that. But other than that, we're, you know, we're probably gonna be needing, we're going, we're gonna be okay. I think we did, we worked our butt off, and we had lots of volunteers, and it, it was, we were blessed. Do you have any questions? I don't know if I answered anything.
Thank you, guys. You did a great job.
Can you guys hear me now? Yeah, Anthony, yeah. You can take the phone off, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you again, Lisa, Lisa. Thank you. Okay, everybody can hear me?
Heard.
Good, good, okay, great. All right, Mike, next we have a report on bulky waste.
Right, yeah, so it's a, so garbage is the topic tonight, so we have bulky waste and then the, the trash contact. But I just wanted to put together a memo to, to let you know, you know, the, the numbers are, are tracking a lot higher than we thought and had budgeted. So the memo goes through the fact that we had basically, for, you know, our bulky waste collection, charged or actually budgeted about 125, 125 tons for the year. And in the first collection, it was 192 tons in just the first collection. So what I'm trying, what we're trying to figure out in the analysis is, and it's really hard, is the pandemic COVID-19 factor in that. In addition, it's driving, I believe, the, the municipal solid waste or garbage, if you will, as well, because those numbers are, are tracking higher as well, given what we budgeted. So there is going to be a deficit there. We are, we are running over on both the bulky waste and municipal solid waste, that we're continuing to track those numbers. And again, it's hard to sort out what, what the pandemic has done to us, just people being home and, and working on home projects, working on a bunch of things, and not going out to eat or what have you. But again, I can't, I can't quantify it yet. We're gonna do the best we can. Some other towns may be in the same thing, trying to figure out if there's a factor of, of 10. But still, I think it's a combination. It's not just, I think our numbers were soft. I think we're off on the numbers, what we looked at historically. So there's a, there's an issue there that we've got to try and get, wrap our, wrap our arms around and try to get deeper into the numbers there. But I just wanted to let you know where we're, where we're at, where we're tracking so far with, with bulky waste and MSW. We have the, the numbers there. If you look back, we had 2018, 2019, that's where we came up with the, you know, the 4,100. So if we basically put 4,200 in there, that's about 350 tons a, a month of garbage, you know, solid waste. And we're coming up with averaging about 404 or 402 at this point, so we are, we are tracking. So I, I think it's a combination COVID and soft numbers.
Mike, a question. What is the source from which we get these numbers reported to us? And is there any way to independently corroborate these numbers after they're reported to us?
Yeah, I come from John's, based off tickets, I think, from, from the transfer stations that they, I mean, or the, wherever they were offloading those. Michelle might have more details. Michelle might have more detail on that, I know she's joined us on the, on the call, Michelle, if you've got anything. But it was one of the things we were going to go back in and look at in terms of actual numbers submitted. And, and to see if there was any way to go back and verify if, if the, the receiving station had kept copies of what was actually, actually done. Because actually, you know, this is the, this is the, the issue, as you know, that, that we, we decoupled, we had an all-in-one price and, and then broke it out. And so, we also, you know, it, it's hard to, it's hard to say, but we'll, we'll look into it. Michelle, I don't know if you, if you heard that question, if we have the detail, if we can get the detail on that analysis.
Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. When, as Mike said, when we had the lump sum contract with Johns, they would report to us every month the total tonnage of MSW and the total tonnage of recycling. And that also included when we were doing weekly bulk. So that total number of the 41, 42 tons for the year was based on reports that they would give to me each month. There was no backup provided as to where those numbers came from. Then we decided to split the contract apart, so they were being paid for service only, and the town was paying for the, the tonnage to Mira currently. And we get tickets each month from Mira as to what Johns brings up to them up in Hartford. And then we split it out with a separate report for the recycling tonnage. There, I don't know if going back to 2018, 2019, Johns would have that information still. But when we did the budget this past year, as Mike said, we raised it to 4,200 tons of just MSW, and then we added in a separate line of 125 tons of bulk, not knowing what was included in that 4,142 tons for the total year. I can certainly request from Johns if they have that information, go back to 1819, but I don't know if they would still have it or not.
It just seems to me that in view of the significantly greater numbers that we're experiencing, that we owe it to the town to request verification of these numbers. And if there is any other way to verify them independently of the reports from the hauler or from Mira, I think we should pursue that.
Yeah, I agree, we'll see, we'll, we'll make that attempt and, and go back to not only Johns, but, but what I was saying was trying to get to, before Mira was in the, or before they started going to Mira, I think they were going somewhere else, wherever the receiving station part was that was taking our MSW, that's what we'll be looking at. And the other thing is, you know, in that, you know, times have changed with respect to the recycling as well. So we were able to luck out and go to Mira for the recycling. And before, when it was bundled in, they were actually, you know, I think making money off of, you know, cardboard, paper, plastic, that was all going to China and, and making, and that, that's completely turned upside down. And I will say, we're also, you know, monitoring, looking at, we're going to be on a webinar tomorrow about the state's attempt to try to untangle or, or figure a pathway forward on both recycle and MSW. And, and the, and the notion of Mira closing, I put that article in there for the council as well, that we're going to have to look at what the impact's going to be with Mira getting out of the business and going into, I think, morphing into a transfer station. So, a couple of things we've got to take a look at, and hope that the state might have information on, as to where we're going to end up, or how, or help us, more importantly, in the next question, the next item, about, you know, the contract and how we do the contract and get that written for January. And hope that we've got some information from the state or guidance from the state on how and what the numbers might look like. Because nobody has any idea on what recycling's going to look like, and, and or even the tonnage of tipping fee on MSW. So, we'll, we'll look at that, but we are in discussion, have talk with Johns, we'll continue to talk with them and the state to figure out how to write the best, back in, to give us the best flexibility as we put it out for the next, next term.
The Hazle's Committee will be having a special meeting on January 7th to review the specs. And after Mike and I do the webinar tomorrow, hopefully have some more information for them to help us through this process and see what recommendations they may have. When I had contacted Mira about their budget for the coming year, if we will have to start paying for recycling or not, they do not start their pro, their budget process until February. We start ours in January, so it's going to be a guessing game if we're going to have to pay for recycling starting July 1st. And if we do, we're looking at $90 plus per ton for recycling, if that's what, you know, Mira decides to do until they close. So hopefully after tomorrow's webinar, we'll have a little more idea where this is all going. But we could be looking at a very hefty budget for refuse starting July 1.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Mike, I think you answered the next question already, anybody else have anything to say? No, Mike, I think you answered the next question already.
Yeah, it, again, we're, we're, we're talking with Johns as well about a potential use of the SyncWee property for potentially as a, as a, as a public-private partnership in a, in a transfer operation there. Again, it's all just conceptual, I don't have anything on paper, I don't have any, anything further than, that's something that they, they threw out when we sat down to talk about the process and going back out and rewriting the, rewriting the specs. So, it's a work in progress, but, you know, unfortunately, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, just, it's a, it's just an unknown and it's, it's entirely, you know, frustrating, but, you know, we've got the, trying to figure out where the market is going to go with recycling, where the market's going to go with municipal solid waste and bulky waste and transfer stations and, and the tonnage and the tipping fee. So, like I said, hope to get some guidance and clarity tomorrow's webinar. And it may not, may not happen tomorrow, it may happen, you know, as, as the budget process unfolds. We'll just have to do the best we can with, you know, estimating numbers for them.
Okay.
I think, you know what, one other, one other comment, I think it probably, might also be helpful that I reach out to both our state rep and senator, and I think Senator Cohen's on the environmental committee, so that might help. She might have some inside information, or not inside, but she might have some, some additional information. And I'm sure that Representative Candelora has got a pretty good ear on what's going on at the Capitol and, and might have some information. So I'm hoping I can report back through the process on, on the bid specs and when we get to January's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, next we, we'll move into community events and presentations. We have a presentation by Jeff Gutzfeld.
Yeah, I'm going to just take us.
International regarding, regarding benefits of using an owner's project manager.
Yeah, I thought this would be appropriate time to, as we engage in, in looking at these projects, we're going to have two major building projects and a repair renovation project. That is being the MBIS brickwork this summer, so all coming together on the same path, if you will, or same timeline. And Jeff and his colleague Mark are, are on the call. And I thought it'd be appropriate to, to have them explain how OPM in, in the lingo of, of the building world is the owner's project manager, otherwise known as owner, owner's rep. And hopefully the, the, the terms and definitions Jeff can help us with in explaining how, what the value is in terms of having an owner's rep and an owner's project manager. So, with that, Jeff, I'll, I'll turn it over to you and Mark, and I've released the screen, so we should be able to share.
Great, thank you, Michael. Mark, are you able to pull that up? Excellent.
Yep.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, everybody, for having us in, Michael. Thank you very much for arranging us to have this conversation with everybody. My name is Jeff Gutzfeld, and with me, as Mike said, is Mark Skalenko. We're with Colliers Project Leaders, right down the street from you in Madison, Connecticut. And as you mentioned, there are many terms used for the services that we provide. Many might be familiar with the old term clerk of the works, which is someone that kind of oversees projects when, on site. But we do a lot more than that. And our job really is to represent the town, the building committee, the board of ed, the district, in managing and overseeing the planning, design, and construction of capital projects. We've been in business since 1996 as an owner's project management firm, and that's, that's all we do. We're not an architect, we don't design, and we're not a builder, we don't construct. We manage process on behalf of our clients. And education is, represents probably about 70, 75% of our work. We also do a lot of municipal building work, as well as college, universities, and other nonprofit cultural-type institutions. But we're here to talk about owner's project management services, so I'm going to turn it over to Mark. And he's going to go through a presentation that kind of talks about what an owner's project manager is and what the benefits of using one throughout a project. Mark, I'll let you take it over from here, and I'll ad lib as needed.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Good evening, everyone. As Jeff mentioned, my name is Mark Skalenko, I'm a managing director with Colliers Project Leaders out of the Madison office. And I'm excited, have the opportunity to speak to you all tonight about the benefit of an owner's project manager for your new high school project. The first thing I generally need to cover in these types of discussions is what exactly is an owner's project manager? And you'll see on the screen, generally, an accepted definition, where we are an extension of your staff. We are a technical advisor, as Jeff mentioned, we're not the architect, we're not the builder. But we are essentially, you know, the town council's extension, the board of ed's representative, the building committee's representative. You know, our singular focus is your interests, your costs, your quality, and your schedule. And we generally get involved with managing all aspects of the project on your behalf. Everything from helping you hire the architect to getting your final audited dollars from the state of Connecticut through the grant process. So you can see there's a lot of things generally here that we get involved with. And I'll get into some of the details in a moment as I move forward in the presentation. This graphic depicts, you know, graphically, you know, how we see and how many communities see the owner's responsibilities for any given project. If you think about a project, there are multiple aspects that go into it. Everything from the building construction, which is generally the contractor's responsibility to build you the building, to the architect, who's responsible for designing the building and the furniture. And then everything else falls into what we call the owner's category. You can see the owner's responsible for everything. So you have $66 million that has been approved for this project, and you're responsible for the $66 million. The contractor's only responsible for the construction costs, and the architect is also only responsible for the construction costs. So our job is to fill the gap, to ensure that you get the building, the design, and all of the other features that are required for the project for that $66 million. It, it literally is that simple to think about from, from that perspective. The next thing I want to talk about is who's using an owner's project manager. For those of you that were on the call earlier, we were talking about how Massachusetts requires all districts to hire an owner's project manager before they hire anybody else for any project over $1.5 million. Because Massachusetts saw the value that an owner's project manager can bring to their districts and to their projects. Rhode Island also requires districts to hire an owner's project manager. But in specifically in Connecticut, you can see represented by the outline of the state, all the yellow dots represent where owner's project managers are being utilized by municipalities for their school projects. And you can see a listing of districts also that are using owner's project managers. The ones in yellow are the ones that we are currently managing or have managed in the last several years. But I want to highlight specifically Branford, which is your neighbor to the south. The Branford-Washington intermediate school hired us at the exact same time that you're at right now with your project, after it had passed referendum and right where they were going into architect selection. Because they saw the value that we could bring early on in the project. So for, for those that aren't familiar with that project, it's essentially a new building on the campus of the existing building. It's $88 million total project budget, and it was about 170,000 square feet. So, pretty complicated to execute, but under budget and on schedule. So again, you know, you wouldn't be alone in hiring an owner's project manager, certainly in Connecticut. This is an interesting story that we tell often. In the town of Stonington, they originally hired us a couple of years ago to just simply help them get their architect under contract, which we did. Then they said, okay, can you help us hire a construction manager? Which we also did, and went through the, the entire process for that. And then afterwards, they said, okay, we're impressed with how you're managing these two aspects. Can you manage this, these two projects for us at the same time? Which we obviously said, absolutely will help you. During the course of our early involvement, we were able to save them almost $8 million in costs of their project. And, and one of the big keys was looking at their schedule that they had developed on their own, and we were able to compress that schedule by a year. So we were able to save them almost $2.5 million, just in escalation, by reducing their schedule by one year. So, they saw the value that we brought, and they realized that for the fee that they paid us of about $500,000, we were able to save them almost $8 million in taxpayer dollars. So, you know, these are the types of stories that we can repeat, you know, time and time again for our clients. So why are they using an owner's project manager? It's very simple, our job is to manage the cost, the quality, and the schedule. You have $66 million for this project, you have a timeline to get in, and you have a level of quality that you're expecting. That's our job, to make sure that your costs, your quality, your schedule are monitored and adhered to. Many of the clients that we work with, the municipalities, went through a project, didn't go well, was late, was overrun with, with budget problems or quality issues. And they saw the value that we were able to bring in mitigating those issues before they became problems. So it's everything from reviewing invoices and change orders, monitoring the construction, monitoring the schedule, and making sure that what is being built is what the town specifically desires. The interesting thing about this photo is, this is also a high school project that we were the owner's project manager for. And you can see, the curved building was the new high school built right next to the existing sprawling high school. So we got involved and worked with the logistics, with the town, with the administrators, to ensure that there was going to be a safe construction zone and then a safe building for the students to occupy during the course of the project. Those are the types of, of issues we get involved with, even with a construction manager and an architect involved. An obvious question is, you know, what are the typical fees for an owner's project manager? And generally, they're about 1% of your total project budget. Now that can vary depending upon how much time and service you need from us. But typically, for our municipal clients in Connecticut, it's about 1%. And then in comparison, architects are going to be anywhere from 5% to 7% or 8%. And contractors are going to be 10% to 12%. So, you know, we're not a big slice of the pie, but the value that we bring is invaluable to our clients. Because again, we know that we save not only our fees, but well in excess of the fees that we would charge, you know, for our clients. So what can we do for specifically the town of North Branford? We could certainly be a conduit to the state of Connecticut and the OSC, GNR, the Office of School Construction and Grant and Review Division. The number of projects that we have, the relationships that we've built, our singular focus is to ensure that we maximize the value and maximize the reimbursement from the state of Connecticut to you all, to make sure that every possible reimbursement dollar is returned to North Branford. Helping you with the selection of your architect, your contractor, and all your various consultants. Managing the design phase, managing the construction phase for your reviewing, again, pay applications and invoices. Being your eyes, your ears, and your voice during the process to ensure you're getting what you want and the timeframe that you're looking for. And again, ultimately, ensuring that the project is finished on time and under budget. And we have a tremendous track record of success in both of those areas. And that's all that I had. I wanted to keep it brief, but certainly would be open to any questions that you may have about the services that I very quickly described to you all.
To be respectful of your time, Mike, we, we went for that short, sweet presentation. We can go longer if needed, if ever you want more. We can go longer if needed, if ever you want more.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mark. This is Joe Fawnen, a member of the town council. Your focus seems to be on school construction, but you indicated early on in your presentation that you've been involved in other projects.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Also looking at what, for us, is a significant expenditure for a new police station. Is that in your wheelhouse, or is that not something you're involved with?
Mark, I got it. Actually, it is very much in our wheelhouse. Connecticut has been less to the table of using an owners' project manager for municipal projects, but Massachusetts has required it for years. And we actually have an in-house specialist on police and public safety facility projects. And we probably have twelve to fifteen police projects in our portfolio. So we consider ourselves experts in public safety design projects as well as public schools. So we could be a tremendous resource for that project as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And it's senior centers, it's libraries, it's any potential municipality project that you can imagine, Joe, our clients have hired us to help them with. And, you know, even as small as a million dollars. You know, there's no project too small for us to be involved with.
Jeff, Mark, it's Mike. Could either one of you go through, maybe explain, the role of a construction management at risk versus the owner at risk in that process? And how you would work in that?
Sure.
Mark, I'll let you take that.
Sure. So the construction manager at risk is one of the delivery approaches for a contractor to build the building. There are generally two ways a building gets built from a contractor's. General construction, which is lump sum, or construction manager at risk. Both are used quite extensively in the state of Connecticut for their public school projects. The construction manager at risk oftentimes is hired during the pre-construction phase, during the design phase. And during the course of design, they're providing estimates and, you know, sometimes constructibility reviews. But that's generally all that they're doing. They're not, their job is not to oversee the architect and to ensure that the architect is designing within the design schedule that we have. They're not getting involved with permitting, generally speaking. They're not getting involved with any of the other consultants that may need to be hired, like environmental consultants or geotechnical engineering consultants. But again, they do sit at the table oftentimes and provide estimates and some constructibility reviews. Usually, their fees are pretty low for pre-construction phase services, and then, you know, you get the bigger fee during the construction phase of the project.
Did you talk, Mark, about what the owners' rep, I mean, what's the difference between an owners' rep and a construction manager at risk?
Yeah, the owners, again, the owners' rep or the owners' project manager oversees, you know, the design team and the construction management team during the design phase. So a good example is if we have a very, and we develop very detailed design phase schedules, which include all of the regulatory and permitting requirements. So if planning and zoning requires a submission on, you know, Tuesday, December fifteenth, our job is to make sure that the design team is preparing the documents in a manner that is consistent with what the town of North Branford is looking for, for a submission on Tuesday, December fifteenth. The construction manager doesn't get involved with that. That's not their purview.
And Mike, from a risk perspective, there is no risk as the owners' project. There's three stools, if you will. There's the designer, the builder, and then the owner. We represent the owner. The builder can be a CM or a GC, and the architect is the architect. The person at risk will be the builder. The owners' rep is not necessarily at risk. He's an advisor and advocate to the town.
Great, yeah. I think that's what I was getting at, too, from a sense from the council, not repeating how we went about MBIS, the intermediate school, in which, again, that's our renovation project for next summer and we having to redo the brick. And so hundreds of thousands of dollars back into water infiltration and a bunch of things of where it was, you know, set up and way it was bid out as the town being at risk and having all of the construction oversight on that. And I'm, you know, certain that the council does not want to repeat that. So I think it's trying to understand how these projects, how the different players are responsible, and the best model, I think, we're going after to get the best bang for our buck.
And each project could have a different delivery based upon the needs of that project. Your high school, being new, might be different than the renovations at the intermediate school, just based upon certain factors about the project. And that's something your owners' rep can help you determine, what is the best delivery method for us for this project, given the scenario that we're facing.
Yeah, one of the features that we can certainly bring, and maybe others as well, is, you know, having a particular focus on the envelope systems of a building to ensure that you don't have water infiltration or air infiltration issues. We have specialists that focus specifically on that for all of our projects. So if you're having roof issues or water leak issues in the intermediate school, A, we can help you diagnose those if you need that, and B, we can certainly ensure that that doesn't happen with the high school.
Mark and Jeff, this is Michelle, the purchasing assistant for the town. So let me interject, if I can, for just a minute. When we built MBIS, the actual school itself, we, the town, held all the contracts for the town, for the project, and for being one, one and a half people in my department, the finance department, and so forth, there was a huge amount of paperwork dealing with all of the applications for payments that came through, any paperwork that had to be reported to the state and so forth. So what the town, I believe, is looking for, and this would be a town council final decision, but a construction company to pretty much handle all of that, including all the change orders, everything was done out of my office. And it's...
Yeah, Michelle, if I could add to that, you went through the construction manager as advisor methodology, which was popular probably about twenty years ago and survived maybe a couple of years before most districts said, you know, I'm not dealing with all this paperwork. And the fact that you held every contract independently is certainly not a methodology that we would suggest. And so you're right, having a single source as either a construction manager or a general contractor who's responsible for all of the subcontracts, and you're getting one pay application and one change order document is definitely the way to go.
Yeah. It was overwhelming, to say the least.
Absolutely. I can imagine.
The files, the files were horrendous. We, book after book after book of change orders on that project and doing the audit with the state and so forth. So definitely looking for a different way to go.
And Michelle, as an owners' project manager, we also bring a financial analyst to the project who manages the project finances on your behalf and helping to approve and get payments through the state. So that's, it's another thing off of your plate that our team takes on for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Tom Zampano, town council. So, so your organization maintains the responsibility or would maintain the responsibility that the projects, the specific detailed projects are being done properly?
Correct.
Yep, we're the eyes and ears on the project, and what we do is provide the building committee or whatever designated group is responsible for the project, the information needed to make timely decisions to keep the project moving. Our job is to provide you with the information. We don't make decisions on your behalf, but we collect and provide you the information so that you can make those decisions. And it's our job to keep it going in a timely fashion so that the project stays on schedule, and we're communicating with the architect and the contractor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff, I'm sorry, Mike. Jeff, it's Ron Pelliccia, the town council. Going through a project like we're looking to go through with the high school, how often would you need to meet with the town council? As, you know, right now, we are considered the building committee.
You are. Is that going to stay that way? Are you going to be the committee for the life of the project?
I believe so, but that's something that we would need to discuss as a council. But let's just assume that that is the case. How often do you foresee having to meet with the council as issues come up? Or, you know, what would that look like?
Mark, why don't you, because I know it changes. It goes from once a month to sometimes twice a month when you get further into a project. Why don't you elaborate on the schedule a little bit?
Yeah, it's a good question, Ron. Typically, it lasts a minimum once a month, because you're going to be approving invoices and pay applications and just getting general updates. You're going to need to approve the project during the course of design from the state's perspective, so that's going to be important. But more than anything else, you just want to know what's happening with the project. How is it evolving? How was the design evolving? During the design phase of a project, we're meeting monthly with the committee just so that they can see how the project is progressing and where do we stand from a budget perspective. And Jeff talked about putting you in a position to make decisions. So oftentimes in design, if the design is creeping over budget, we've got a valuable engineer, which is to bring the project back on budget. So, you know, we come to those committee meetings with ideas, and you're going to decide, you know, which are the right value engineering items to accept. So minimum monthly, sometimes, you know, twice a month, you know, as things get hot and heavy. But then the other thing that we typically do for any project, Ron, is we'll look to establish a working group. So there may be one or two members of this committee, or it's not a quorum. So you may have one or two members of this committee, one or two members of the administration, and we might meet weekly during the course of design to review all sorts of details, you know, the look of the building, the finishes that are being used, the mechanical systems, the sustainability measures.
The furniture.
The furniture.
Flag came up on the police project.
Yeah, I mean, all sorts of issues. So those working groups generally meet weekly for an hour or two to talk about very detailed information. Once we're in construction, oftentimes we see finance subcommittees get established to review, you know, change orders and pay applications in advance of your town council meeting so that when you get to this meeting, you know, and if you're the chair of the finance subcommittee, let's say, you can say, okay, you know, the finance subcommittee has reviewed these three invoices and these two change orders, and we recommend approval. This way, this meeting that we're in right now won't last two or three hours because people will be asking, you know, about every line item and every pay application or invoice. So, you know, we could certainly set up a framework that makes the most sense for North Branford. But, you know, it can certainly get pretty heavily involved for certain individuals, but at a minimum, monthly meetings during the course of the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, Mark or Jeff, I have a question. It's Bob Viglione.
Yes, sir.
Is someone on site during the whole building process? And, yes.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're on site, yeah. Once construction starts, we are on site every day to ensure that the contractor is staying on schedule and following the quality requirements of the drawings and specifications, every day. And because we're literally fifteen, twenty minutes away, it's an easy commute for, you know, for our staff.
And Mayor, it doesn't have to be full-time either. You know, it sounds like we're there, but we could be there in the morning, in the afternoon. You know, you don't have to pay for a full-time representation because we're close and the project doesn't necessarily warrant that. So we're trying to watch your dollars and cents. And we don't think, it doesn't need full-time. We won't, we won't, we won't suggest full-time, especially if we can get it done in less time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Tom again. So if, if something was done, being done incorrectly or not to, not to scope or not to, you know, match the drawings or the design, how would that be handled?
So what we typically do, Tom, is we issue, well, we tell the contractor, you're not, you're not meeting the plans and specifications, and we flag it. We carry an observation report that identifies deficiencies that we're noticing in the field. And that deficiency remains open and on a lock until the contractor fixes it. It's reviewed every week at the weekly meetings when you're in construction. And, you know, we basically require them to fix it. If they decide that they don't want to fix it, then we start withholding money, and they don't get paid, you know, for what was done in a non-compliant way. And usually, that gets their attention.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that I understood, again, the role of responsibility and just to make sure we weren't losing that aspect of it.
Okay. No, it's really important, Tom, you know, the quality observations. You know, we have specific personnel that usually come from construction. A lot of them were former construction superintendents, so they built buildings. They know how they're supposed to be built. They can talk the same language that the contractor speaks in the field. So they can, if they see something that doesn't look right, they look at the drawings and say, yeah, that's not right, you've got to fix that. And, you know, now it becomes something that we track until it's fixed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Jeff and Mark, thank you very much. We appreciate you all.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
Merry Christmas and stay safe.
Thank you, you too.
You too. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Take care.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Bye now.
Good night.
Okay, next we'll move into citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. Now, do you have anything, Anthony? Michael, you have anything?
Just give me one second, I'm just checking now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, while Mike is checking, I just want to say that my special thank you to Parks and Recs for Candy Cane Lane, which was held on December fourth. The event far exceeded their expectations. The backup on twenty-two was like going to the Poco Fest of fireworks. It was absolutely incredible, and they had a lot of help from Public Works and their supporters, their sponsors, the Rotary Club. The libraries were involved, Branford Bible Church. It was just an outstanding event. And I know there were a lot, a lot of positive comments from people on Facebook, thanking them for this, that it was absolutely wonderful. So my hats off to our Park and Rec department, our new director. This was one of her first major events that she held for the town, and it definitely was a success.
Thanks, Rose. I heard a lot of good things about it, too.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment via email.
Okay. All right, let's move into resignations and appointments. First, I have the reappointment of Ashley Joyner to the Inland and Wetlands Commission, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Joe.
I think Marie has seconded it.
I did.
I couldn't read your lips.
I'm having trouble with my iPad.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilor Fawnen, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion? Michelle, can we have a vote? Where are you? There you are. Can we have a vote?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thanks.
Okay, next, a reappointment of Trish Mace to the Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire five thirty-one of two thousand twenty-three.
I'm... Second.
Joe, is that you?
Mike.
Oh, Mike, okay. Motion was made by Councilor Duddy, and seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote?
On favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, next is a reappointment of Elizabeth Kaplan to the Economic Development Commission as community at large, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three.
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, who was?
Joe Marie.
Joe Marie, okay. Michelle, did you get that? Thank you. Any discussion? Can we have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right. Next is a reappointment of Mary Ellen Budney.
Budney.
Budney, to the Library Board, term to expire 12/31/2022.
Don't move, Mr. Mayor. I'll second.
Joe and Marie?
Correct.
Marie and Joe.
Marie and Joe.
Other way around. Made the motion, I seconded.
Okay. All right. Did you get that, Michelle? Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Next is unfinished business discussion in action. Revised town council schedule in discussion on additional meetings for building projects.
Yeah, so the first one, I think, is the, just the revised schedule for the council, first and third. So I hope that is accurate there for, I think we, make sure we got the August meeting in there, and then December 7th and 21st. So hopefully that is accurate, and we can, you can approve that, and we'll send that on to the clerk.
I'll move to approve the 2021 meeting schedule for Town Council Water Pollution Control Authority.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Council Duddy, seconded by Council Angeloni.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Can we have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Next is request.
If we could, Mayor, sort of the second half is just the, it's just a conversation, I guess, in terms of the meeting schedule, and as we just heard from the last presentation talking about the number of meetings that may be required, I threw this in there just in terms of the police project and NB, you know, the high school project. You know, the council meets first and third. That only leaves you the second and fourth you could be facing, looking at every Tuesday of the month in either a meeting of the council, or maybe subcommittee meeting of the finance subcommittee, if you're looking at processing the amount of workflow that's going to come through the council. Should you decide to take the role of permanent project building committee, the schedule's going to be very tight, and I just wanted an opportunity to discuss that and get guidance on that.
Anybody have anything?
My feeling is, let's see how it goes. If it gets too much for our council meeting, we could adjust it. If not, let's just go with the flow.
What are you suggesting, Mike? That we not schedule additional meetings and just go with first and third?
Right. I would just go with the first and third, and let's see how it goes. If it gets heavy, then we're going to have to put additional meeting in. I don't foresee a lot of change orders coming in on the first project.
Well, I think we need to have a further discussion on what we're going to do. You know, the last presentation was very helpful to me in understanding everything, and I think that needs to be a discussion by the council, because it is, I mean, it is an additional cost, and it's a, you know, 1% of the budget on the high school, you know, you're talking $650,000 at least. And I guess it depends on exactly what we would have someone do if we decided to go that route, but I think that's a very open and frank discussion we need to have, because I don't think we want to repeat the NBIS project.
Oh, no.
And so, once we determine that, if that's the route that we're going to go, and, you know, that has to be a discussion probably at our next meeting in January, because we need to go out to bid on the, I mean, we need to get it moving, because the other projects are moving along, then I think from that point, we can establish more definite meetings, whether we have them at council meetings, or we combine both of them together into one, because we might decide we want the construction manager company to do both projects for us. We might be able to do it in one meeting a month, but I just think we need more discussion on it.
I agree with Rose.
I agree.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, this, Michelle, if I can interject for a second.
Sure.
I've gotten emails from one or two of the prior permanent project committee members asking if that committee is going to be reestablished for the police station and the high school and possibly the masonry project for NBIS. All three of these will be coming online shortly. And when we did NBIS, we also had a member of Permanent Project who would attend the weekly site meetings with myself and Jack Crasco, who unfortunately is no longer alive, also had the authority from Permanent Project to be able to approve change orders up to $5,000 onsite, so it wouldn't hold up any of the smaller change orders that would come through. So determining how all of this is going to play out, if you're going to have a construction manager, if we're going to have Permanent Project, it's a huge undertaking to start writing specs until the town council decides which direction you want to go, along with the owner's rep. So for three projects, we're looking at six sets of specs coming to you once you decide how all of these projects are going to be handled.
Rose, it sounded like you're thinking of tabling this.
Well, I mean, the only, the item that we're talking about right now is the meeting schedule, because that's what's on there. So I just think we all need to, you know, just kind of process what was given to us tonight in the presentation and be ready to discuss it at our next meeting and come up with something, come up with a plan as to how we'll begin.
I think I agree with Rose. I think we need to have, we have to start with what is the role of the town council on this? Is it permanent project building committee going to be involved? I think we, I think, Mike, we need to have a period of time so we can really discuss that in January, look at all the aspects of it, should be, you know, a major part of the meeting.
I agree, too.
Yeah, okay. I agree, and it is, there are three large projects, well, two construction and a renovation. So I agree, and I think you have to make that threshold question. If the council's going to serve as the permanent project building committee, so be it. But we'd like to get those bid specs going as well simultaneously. So, you know, January, first meeting in January, we'll be back at it, and, you know, let me know if you have any specific information you want, let me know, but we'll tee it up for the January meeting.
Good.
I mean, I don't want to say that these projects aren't going to go to the permanent building committee, either one of them, but I think initially, the feeling that I got from the council in previous discussions is that the council was going to start as the building committee, and at some point in time, and there is no timeline, but at some point in time, we could move the project to permanent building. But the other issue that we have is that committee is not a full committee right now.
Correct.
And so that becomes an issue also.
Yes, you're right.
There's a lot of things to consider and discuss, I think, before we, but we need to keep the projects moving along.
Right.
Now, one quick question. If we go with the company like in the presentation tonight, do we need a permanent project building committee, or will these be our project building committee?
Well, some, I think, Mike, you still need a committee, the permanent project building committee or the council, so that they'll report that owner's rep, whether it's this company or some other company, and we'll have to bid that out. They'll come before the council or permanent project committee. Or, like he said, maybe even instead of meeting, you know, a full council, maybe the finance committee does all of the financial change order and/or, you know, approvals, and then brings to the council for approval. But I think it's one or the other, either you have the permanent project building committee or the council.
Well, I like their idea of subcommittees.
Yes.
You know, so you could have the finance subcommittee, you could have a finance subcommittee to handle the, you know, financial end of it, approving invoices and things like that, and then have another subcommittee, especially on the high school, that subcommittee, you would want some board of ed, at least one board of ed member on there, and some council members, maybe someone from the ad hoc, and they would meet with, you know, that company and the team to see once what's going on, so that when it comes to the council for approval, it's already gone through someone, and they can just highlight, you know, they can give us the short version of it. And that way, we might be able to just keep it at council meetings and not have a lot of meetings.
I like that idea.
I think that's a great idea.
I like that idea, too.
So there's no action on this?
No, there's no.
Just go to further.
There's no action on the schedule, the meeting schedules.
Okay.
There just needs to be a vote on the, the town council's schedule.
Yeah, that, well, there was a motion.
Yeah, I made the motion.
And I think, there was no vote on it, Michelle?
Yep.
Okay.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thanks.
Thank you. Next is a request to increase the purchasing bid threshold to $15,000.
Yeah, so as Rose mentioned in the report, this was an item that was on the last meeting, got tabled, and the finance committee took it up. And the upshot of that is basically to table the item, or recommend table the item, because at this point, what I'm going to do in talking with the finance subcommittee is get more analysis on this and more track record of how this, more tracking, and see how often this is going to impact us, and see where that brings us in six months or a year. And if we continue to have issues in terms of things that come up that we could avoid by having a higher cap, then I'll bring it back. But at this point, the recommendation would be just to continue to monitor it, track it, and bring forth analysis in six months to 12 months. So I think just, actually, I don't know that you have to table it, but we could just take it off the agenda, and I'll make a note to bring it back down the road.
It sounds good to me.
Everybody all right with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we do that, then? All right. Next is C. And I didn't get this whole thing. Anthony, you want to?
Sure. This is basically just closing the loop on the capital plan. You recall, at your December 1st meeting, you approved it to send to Planning and Zoning for an 824 referral. You should have a letter in your attachment that went out today from Cary. Planning and zoning, as Deputy Mayor Zampiano reported at their December 10th meeting, voted favorably on the plan, and they kicked it back to you guys for ultimate adoption. And that's what the motion that was made in December was, for me to send it to Planning and Zoning, and then bring it back to you once we have a response from Planning and Zoning, again, which was a favorable response. So this motion basically adopts it, finalizes the, and the only plan that really makes a difference is the current 20 to 21 numbers. Everything else beyond that is just up for discussion. So this will get us going on the current year CIP, as well as establishing new funds for the police department project, the high school project, and the communications project. We're going to account for them as separate funds, easier to track that way, more accurate bookkeeping.
But I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council adopts the 2020 to 21 through 2025-26 Capital Improvement Plan pursuant to the favorable review by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Okay. Tommy, was that you?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Motion was made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Okay. We're going to move into new business discussion in action. First is review and approval of bid specifications, RFP number 2, 2020-2021 fireworks for Poco Fest.
Just, Jen, I'm on the call if anyone has any questions.
Can you just kind of brief us as to what the changes are in this contract?
Sure. So last year, when we had sent out four proposals, we had heard back from a few of the different fireworks companies that there was questions about the bid bond that was in it, the performance bond, and they were basically saying that with the way that it was written, they'd have to take the money that they would spend on that out of the show, so they had requested kind of like a rewrite of how we have that in there. So I know Ben has been working on it and Michelle, and basically, we put in a penalty if they don't show up and don't do the fireworks. But other than that, it's all the same, you know, safety requirements and everything like that. Then also added in language for COVID or other natural disasters and pandemics, should anything else like that happen again or affect us in 2021. So we're hoping that by doing it this way, we'll be able to get some more companies to come back and give us proposals for fireworks.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve RFP 2, 2021 fireworks for the Potato and Corn Festival.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Council Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano. Any further discussion?
Just thank you guys so much, and thank you, Ben, for helping out with that.
Thanks, Jen.
Have a great night.
You're welcome.
Can I have a, Michelle, can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Next, I have award of bid results from rfaq.p, number 2, 2020 to 2021, Architectural Engineering Services for North Branford Intermediate School Masonry Repairers.
Yeah, so you have a memo in there of the seven bidders with the recommendation, for Michelle, that QA&amp;M is the lowest base bid there at $12,500 for that project.
I'm sorry, Mike, what was the figure?
$12,500 for the base bid, and if required, alternate number one in the amount of $5,250.
So what exactly is alternate number one? The bidding in construction phase? What does that, what does that cover?
I think it, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, and I thought, I don't think Fran's with us, but it was the, is that the additional issue around what Fran and Al Rose found on the overhang and the?
The flashing?
Flashing, I believe.
So, so this price here is just to do the bid specs and the architectural thing? Are we still looking at going out to bid to have kind of like a construction manager onsite when the project is done?
Exactly right, yeah. So this is just for the architect to write a bid. We followed the same process we did for the auditorium that came out very well in that project methodology where we had an architect write the specs and then we went out and got the contractor and then put a owner's rep on top of that. So that's, we're hoping to follow the same model. But for this purposes, as you just said, it's just for the, writing the spec.
Okay, and it's our intention that this job get done this summer, the summer of '21?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to award RFQP number two, 2021 Architectural Engineering Services for NBIS Masonry Repairs to QA and M at a base cost of $12,500 and an alternate one price of $5,250.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampaano. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still at a loss as to what this alternate one is. In the explanation, it refers to it as bidding construction phase rate. And Rose said something about an overhang.
No, Joe, you're, Joe, it's Michelle, you're correct. Alternate number one would be if we wanted them to remain on, to oversee the contractor doing the work. What the town council decided when we did the auditorium is that we were going to have an owner's rep oversee the contractor onsite, not the architect themselves.
Okay, my mistake. So Michelle, is the overhang issue built into the base bid then?
Yes, that would be part of the design, that would be part of the design. When we did the walkthrough at the, at NBIS, it was discussed then that they needed to come up with a solution for the rain coming down, the brick and staining it and so forth. So that would be part of the design fee. The alternate would be only if we wanted to keep them on to oversee the construction of the contractor. And like I said, when we did the auditorium, town council decided that we needed an owner's rep to oversee the contractor, not the architect.
Right.
So are we or are we not committing to using the architect in that role if we're approving this $5250?
My suggestion would be no, only the base bid and go out to bid for an owner's rep.
Well, so, so how much did it cost us on the auditorium project, which was substantially less than what this is going to cost us?
Well, the not concede number for Al Rose's construction company was $19,000 and I believe they came in somewhere, uh, don't remember the final billing, but I think it was somewhere around $15,000, $16,000. You have to decide if you want the architect to oversee his design. And if sign is wrong, then who's responsible?
And is that why you're recommending we use someone independent, Michelle?
Yes.
Given our presentation tonight, when we're taking time to consider for our next meeting, what we want to do, shouldn't we consider this, wouldn't it be, make sense to, to maybe hire one or put it out to bid for one company to, to kind of supervise all three projects? We might even get a better, better deal on that. Does anybody else have?
I agree, I agree with you, Ron.
So we need to amend this?
I'll, I'll amend the, my motion to award it just on design services for NBIS Masonry Repairs at $12,500.
Second.
Okay. I like that, Ron.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampaano. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, next we have a financial report as of November 30, 2020.
The report, just want to point a couple of things out. The top line, the property tax collections year over year, identical to the year before. The second line down, you remember Councilor Angeloni's comment earlier as it relates to our deviation from the adopted tax policy where we chose not to proceed to the Marshall and Collection Agency for the 2018 grant list delinquent real estate and personal property taxes. And that's resulting, as you could see on, on the paperwork, with some diminished delinquent property tax collections. And again, as Councilor Angeloni mentioned, it was the desire of the finance committee to hold off on that again until April, when we're going to send the 19 delinquent taxpayers to the Marshall and Collection Agency. We'll just capture the 18 as well. Also, in the revenue section, you notice last month on the state grants for education, there was a timing difference that's reconciled itself. You see 25.7% last year, 25% this year. The way that's paid is 25% on November 1st, February 1st, and then the balance on May 1st. On the expenditure side of the house, it, a couple of things are noteworthy. On the technology department, you'll see it's the only department showing up over expended. And it's not truly out the door expended. You'll see the $50,000 budget, 37 has actually been expended, but about $15,000 is tied up in purchase orders. As our life becomes more and more complex with different aspects requiring assistance, whether it's door systems or internet issues or webpage issues or a multitude of things, that number continues to increase and we're still getting a very good bang for our buck, but just wanted to alert you of that. The other item is the very bottom. If you look at the bottom year over year, last year, we were about 45.7% compared this year, we're only at 40%. So you might think that's kind of like a windfall. If you look up two, two numbers from the bottom, the Board of Education budget, you'll see last year, we were about 36.7%, about 11.8 million out the door. This year, we're about 28.4%, significantly lower, and about 9.2 million out the door. And a couple of big items come to note with that. The first being the annual large payment for buses. That is a multimillion dollar payment that has not been made as of yet. And the second, we got, we got notification last week that they paid three months' worth of medical insurance payments, over a million dollars, in the beginning part of, of December. So that wasn't reflected on your report that you have in front of you now. So against when those items reconciled, that difference hopefully will become more in line with last year's numbers, but currently, it's a little bit under last year's numbers and those are the two items that come to mind as significant reasons why. Aside from those two points, the technology and the Board of Education numbers, the rest of the report remains unremarkable. And if there is any particular questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anthony, I'm sorry, it's Ron. Just one quick question. I know Franny had a lot of overtime in those, those storms over the summer dug into his budget. And now we're expecting a, quite, quite a big storm this week. And just looking forward, if we do have a snowy winter and there's a lot of activity, what's, what's his budget looking like? Is he, is he in a good spot or is, because I, I thought I talked to him at one point and he was a little concerned that, you know, if we had a lot of snow this year, we might have some problems.
Well, that's, that's an excellent point. The, the two storms over the summer did not hit his budget. If you look on, on his numbers, he's 47.3% last year to 41.7. He's actually a little better this year. They were both charged off to a reserve fund in anticipation that we were going to have FEMA events for both the Izzy Esas and the tornado. Izzy Esas never materialized dollar wise and the tornado, although we had significant impact, North Haven had significant impact, Branford, on a county basis, I don't believe that the last I saw was that that's not going to qualify for a FEMA designation as well. So the question is going to be to the council, once we look at those two, two events, the Izzy Esas and the tornado, and we've currently charged those elsewhere, how do we resolve that now? Do we put them back into the departments, whether it was police, fire, public works, et cetera? Or do we wait till the end of the year and do a contingency appropriation, hopefully, and make that 225 fund hole for those charges that we put out there instead of putting them to the operating budget? We can discuss that as, as the year progresses and again, your point is valid. If, if it's a bad year or if it's a mild year that has a significant impact on our, on our bottom line. But there are, I can run numbers for you to get an idea of what we're talking about too, for those two events. The Izzy Esas, even from our perspective, wasn't a huge event dollar wise. But the tornado, as you saw the amount of damage and the amount of trees and the significant pile that Fran had accumulated, there was some significant cost in, in the tree removal process as well as the, the chipping of all those, those trees and such. So I will, I will for January have a, a cost estimate for you of what we spent on those two pots of money. And ultimately, we have to decide how we're going to handle that. Because they never qualified, never met the threshold for FEMA designations, do we then put them back into the general fund, hit those respective departments? Or do we use the contingency appropriation and shoot money out to the 225 fund to, to balance out with those two project costs? But I'll, I'll have numbers for you in January.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay. Next I have approval of tax refund.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
All right, next is citizen statements and petitions.
I have two things.
Anthony has a couple of things.
I have just two comments, both from Cliff Potter. The first, there was some comments previously about the issue we were having with the technology in the beginning, but that, that was resolved luckily. Cliff echoing Councilor Angeloni's comments said Candy Cane Lane is typical of how this town steps up to the task at hand. And on the discussion about the, the construction projects, it's, it's time to let professional people watch our projects. We have had too many failures with our past local project manager.
Thank you, Anthony.
And Mayor, I have no comments in the email public comments.
Okay, thanks, Michael. A motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Happy holidays, everyone, be safe.
Same to you, Michael, thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Mike, are you in tomorrow?
Oh.